Maybe we could push, uh, we could get potential volunteers from there. Also, they have programs where we can, for instance, put a description of a project that we want. Um, and they can give us, uh, paid interns as well. And so that might also be a way in which, uh, for instance, like, uh, that could be a way in which, uh, we could get interns for advancing different aspects of the, of the project that you want.
Well, that's great. You know, Ian Roy at Brandeis, which is in your neck of the woods now, right? Is enthusiastically taking on certain aspects of, um, of Enable focusing on, uh, probably devices and, uh, documentation.
Oh, nice.
But he, he's got a very good intern program and he's, he's really, he's a really good guy. And you and he should get together if you haven't already.
Oh, great. The great idea. Thank you. Thank you. I'll, I'll aim to write to him. That's a great idea.
Just so you guys know, I have the stream going now because we're, uh,
Okay.
after. So we're, we're going to go ahead and get started here. And I, I, if you don't mind, Saif, I just need a few minutes. We've got to cover our action items and a couple of other items, then we'll hand it over to you. We have a special presentation today. Um, are you able to help with notes, Ben?
Yep.
Good. All right. Um, I, I'm getting some, uh, unusual notifications about maybe limited bandwidth on my end, uh, which I don't usually see. So I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to, I've got the live stream going to YouTube, but I'm also going to record locally as a backup, um, because I'm hearing and seeing everyone. Okay. So at least I'll have a good recording if there's something wrong with the live stream. Um, so with that out of the way, um, I'm going to, uh, hold off on, uh, having Saif introduce herself since I will imagine you're doing that at the beginning of your presentation, but since, uh, everyone here knows you, but people watching and listening might not. So I'll, I'll introduce yourself when you get started. Um, quickly going through action items, um, I've got one to write up a Lumeo discussion thread about, uh, doing the matching platform analysis, but we're holding off on this until we hear back from our friends at Deloitte UK, um, because they expressed some interest in that. So we're going to wait on that one. Uh, John and Ben have been working to follow up on the internship possibilities through the handshake program. And that actually came up in the recent discussion that we had with Ian Roy, who feels that he can help us to, uh, sort of optimize how we're using that platform, help us get set up better and start to market some of our other needs through that platform. So that's another area that it sounds like he might be able to help us with. Uh, John or Ben, any other updates on that one?
No.
Okay. Uh, Mazvi had a task to go live with the, uh, macroscope and he did that. He also made some really nice improvements. I just want to show that quickly here. Looks, uh, very impressive. Um, Mazvi, can you maybe just, I, I'm not sure I fully understand the meaning of some of this. Can you explain quickly to us like, what do the size of the dots indicate?
Someone should do a screen share.
Oh, I'm not sharing my screen?
No.
It says I am.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay. So Mazvi, what does the size of the dot indicate?
Do you guys hear me by the way?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Good. Uh, so probably John would be the, the point person to answer the stuff, uh, but he forgot. So, um, the color, okay. So each thread has a color. However, there are only 10 colors, so they repeat.
Got it.
The size of the bubble is directly in proportion to the size of the thread. So the bigger the bubble, the more responses to that thread.
Okay. Reload here and then.
And the horizontal axis is time. And so.
That's what confused me. So there's, there's posts in order of appearance here. So there's quantities here. So over time, our overall number of posts has increased. I get that. But then like, what's the meaning of some of these outliers? Like, what is this dot over here indicate being?
Someone responded to an old thread.
Ah, okay. I see. So these are the, the initial post was over here and then replies go out horizontally. I see. Okay. Sorry, go ahead, John.
So if you zoom in on one of the big bubbles, uh, so there you go. Right? So what's going on there? Now it makes sense to me. That's a thread. The bubble gets larger as the thread gets longer. You only see that if you zoom in.
I see. And then click on any one of these dots, it will take you to the actual post in question.
Right. And by the way, what was that controversial topic?
Oh, that was the one where we were telling people to start shipping all of their printed parts for our conference back in 2014.
There you go. That was a burst of activity. So, so there you go. So there's, you know, uh, what is it? Eight years of history?
Yeah, it's pretty, and I, you know, we have, there are severe limitations with the search function in the hub. It doesn't even put search results in chronological order. It's very hard to use. So I would say this is a much better way of searching our archives and finding posts from the hub. Um, so this is.
And what you, what you haven't demonstrated is that while you can zoom on the mess, you can also filter by putting a search term in there.
That's right. So if you want to look for maybe anything that John Schull has posted, uh, I'd say it, it doesn't actually do full, it, it's going to take that as, as it's going to find anything with John or Schull, I believe. So.
Uh, no, no, no. This is a direct string comparison. So again, someone should, should probably take this across the line, uh, and finish it. It is, you know, the, the skeleton is there, but, um, there are a lot of, uh, user improvements that could, that could, that could happen here.
Well, it's very cool. Now, question is how, has anyone added this into where it's like clearly linked like right from our main?
No, because it's not finished.
Okay.
You know, Mazvi, it's finished enough to be, I think faster than the built-in search, don't you think?
I think it's a big.
If it's, if it's a one keyword search, maybe perhaps maybe, but if you want a more advanced search, um, then no, as I said, this is a direct string comparison.
Alright, so look, it's not going to hurt us to hold off for a week. Let's save that or if time permits later today, but let's save that for our next meeting discussion. We'll talk about how to appropriately roll that out or when it makes sense to roll it out. But I, I certainly know I'll be using it. So I'm glad you were able to do that. Thanks, Mazvi.
Quick question.
I just want to say that there's a research paper to be done just using this tool.
Yeah, it's a great way to.
Great, a great idea. Yes.
And, uh, the, the colors, what do they, um, relate to?
Uh, the colors. Sorry, go ahead, Maz.
Oh, John was, was.
Alright, so the colors simply, basically each thread gets a random color so that you can tell them from each other.
But we only have 10 colors available, so they get reused.
We can have 100,000 colors. It's just someone needs to add them in.
Yeah, okay. All right. So let's come back to that because that, there's plenty to talk about. It's a great tool, but let's, we'll save that. I have it on the agenda for next time. Um.
Where should I put the macroscope notes?
Uh, if you would, down under discussion topics, there's a section for enable infrastructure and that's where I have it under the enable hub. You'll see enable macroscope into that, under there.
Okay, great.
Okay. And, uh, let's see, let's look, take a look at our metrics. I don't think anything stood out here. You notice that the Enable Web Central metrics are empty. That's because I'm unable to get into Enable Web Central. Nobody is able to get to Enable Web Central because we allowed the SSL certificate to expire. I did renew the certificate ahead of time and the way their wording was, it sounded like it would auto-update on the server. It didn't. I am now in the process of getting the new certificate activated on the server. Unfortunately, my engineer is out of town until tomorrow. So we are down until tomorrow. I apologize, folks, but you will be able to get back in securely tomorrow. So apologies for the, uh, access issue on Enable Web Central.
The, the fact that this hasn't happened before is a testament to your usual reliability. We forgive you.
Well, thank you, but I, I did drop the ball here. So I apologize. Uh, it's, uh, it's going to be back up quickly. Um, everything else here is pretty typical. I want to point out that we did, uh, allocate some funds for somebody because I saw that went down a couple of grams. Um, that's a good thing. We got to use these funds. So let's keep projects coming in Lumeo. If you haven't, uh, already posted something, it's a good time. And then, uh, I think I'm going to.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to be interrupted, but, um, I just want to say that Rochester Enable Limited had a board meeting. Um, Enable volunteer and accountant extraordinaire Evan Blackman is now the treasurer of Rochester Enable Limited, which is the 501(c)(3) that manages this bank account. And we had a meeting just the other day and, um, the other day, the bank account and the tally on Open Collective matched to the penny. So it's a new era of accountability and transparency.
Um, so we always usually talk about the most popular posts of the week and I'm not going to go into these today because I want to leave, uh, all our time for Saif. I'll just point out that Alexander shared his Phoenix Print in Place design and there's some comments going on on that. Uh, Joshua Trabinsky is looking for help on a challenging case. There is a link here in the notes if anyone wants to take a look at that. And George McBroom is asking, uh, a question we've heard many times before. Hey, how are other volunteers finding people to make devices for? So that'll bring us back to a discussion we've, we've had, uh, many times. So we'll save those for another time. Um, but for now I'm going to pass things over to our special guest today, Saif Savage, who I'm hoping will please introduce yourself, Saif, for anyone watching and then take it from there.
Hi, everyone. Um, it's such an honor to be here and, uh, very special thanks to the Enable community who has been able to and helped us to be able to push forward this research. Um, so I'm currently an assistant professor at Northeastern University and I also collaborate with the National Autonomous University of Mexico, UNAM, in Mexico City. And together, um, along with Enable, we have been able to conduct this large scale with this study around the different types of ecosystems that exist around 3D printed assistive technology. Um, and we started to understand what type of collaborations, how are people working together, um, to push forward, um, the, the, the use of 3D printed technology. And I'm going to present to you today the results of this study and also I would love to have discussions with you on how we can work together for the future of Enable, especially thinking about that now we are a global organization. Um, and so I'm very interested in thinking about how we can unite forces with different groups across the world, which, uh, Enable has been doing a fantastic job in, in, in this. And again, but very special thanks to, um, all of you who have facilitated this research. Um, can I share my screen? Oh, I see. I can't share my screen actually. So I'm sharing now my screen. Um, do you guys see my screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. Okay. So let us begin. Um, let me just, I put it for, uh, full screen. So today we're going to be talking about the research that we did around understanding the care ecosystems of 3D printed assistive devices. Um, and again, this was done in collaboration with Northeastern, uh, John and also the University of Washington, uh, as well as the National Autonomous University of Mexico, UNAM. So what we did was that we interviewed 31 individuals who represented seven different countries, Brazil, Chile, um, Costa Rica, France, India, Mexico, and the US. Um, and all of these individuals had different roles. They were makers, clinicians, recipients. And our goal was to start to better understand how people from different regions of the world who also have different roles are collaborating with each other to produce 3D printed technology and give support to recipients. Um, why was this important? Because most prior work had focused primarily on the US and had interviewed primarily makers and a little bit clinicians, but there was still gaps in terms of understanding how different actors collaborate with each other and also how this is happening outside the US. Um, and so this is a photo that represents the different people that we interviewed and also the different ecosystems that they represent. So, um, for instance, we had people from the US, uh, who represented Enable and noticed that we have different makers from Enable, different recipients and also, uh, some clinicians. We also were able to interview people who represented a private company, uh, in the US and who were making, uh, 3D printed assistive technology. And so we were able to interview the recipients of the products that this company created as well as, uh, a maker. Um, we were also able to recruit people from Mexico who are creating their own devices. Um, and here we, we connected with recipients of those devices and clinicians, um, who are giving support to the, the recipients. Um, we also had people from India, Chile, Costa Rica, Brazil, and France. Um, and so our goal was to understand the different ways that people from this ecosystem collaborated, from these different ecosystems collaborated with each other to produce 3D printed devices and, um, and also support care. Um, and so we're not studying, we're not characterizing all the ecosystems that exist, but rather we're studying different working examples about how multiple stakeholders collaborate within these care ecosystems and the main challenges they face. Um, and we use examples of differences in how ecosystems function to better characterize, characterize the key features of these care ecosystems. So our goal is to say, okay, we're studying people who care, we're studying care ecosystems that have very different cultures that are within different geographical locations. And our goal is to find common patterns that they might have, um, also identify what are the common challenges that they're facing, uh, and use that to characterize their ecosystems and devise strategies through which we can identify what kind of things are working best, um, so that we can go towards those, those different goals. Um, here's examples of some questions that we, that, that we had. Uh, we were very interested in understanding what were the interactions that people had with their ecosystem, also the type of culture that, that, that they followed within their ecosystem, um, also their different work dynamics. So in terms of ecosystem interaction, some things that we were interested in understanding was, okay, so how do you interact with makers? How do you interact with recipients? How do you interact with nurses, therapists? In terms of, of culture, it was a lot about, okay, what, what are some of the values that you guys have around 3D printed assistive technology that you believe resonate the most? Um, also, we were interested in learning about their work dynamics. So do you have a process for working together with makers, doctors, nurses, therapists, and recipients? Please describe. And so we were very interested in learning about the different ways that people work together. Um, and we wanted to use this within different, uh, cultural contexts to find common grounds about how people were collaborating. Um, here's a little overview of the people who participated in our survey. Um, noticed that we had, we had 31 people participate. We had a number of different recipients, a number of different makers, clinicians, uh, from different parts of the world and who also had different, uh, hands, uh, from enabled companies, hospitals. And here we present as well information about their gender, um, that, that they, that they had. And so now I'm going to present briefly some of the findings that, that we identified. So we found that overall providing follow-up to recipients was a key challenge that ecosystems faced. So follow-up is when, after you give the device to recipients, you provide support for them. Uh, for instance, uh, help them to fix their device, help them to, uh, learn how to use and adapt their device, uh, obtain feedback about how the device is working and their life are not working. Um, and what we found was that all ecosystems struggled with providing follow-up. Um, and some ecosystems were never able to provide sustained follow-up. And so that, that's important, um, that in some ecosystems, having, providing sustained follow-up just never happened. Um, what we found was that the ecosystems that were able to have more sustained follow-up, uh, this is a continuous way of providing support to recipients after they obtained their device was on one hand, um, through the integration of the maker culture, um, in both the lives of recipients and also clinicians. For recipients, um, getting associated with the maker culture helped them to view their device as a work in progress. And because their device was a work in progress, it meant that, so the maker culture has a notion of you are constantly, um, improving. Um, things, they, they provide, the maker culture provides people as well with a growth mindset. And so this meant that when recipients receive their device, um, and they were connected with the maker culture, they had ideas about the device that I have, this is not final. I have the opportunity to potentially improve the device. And so as a consequence, they didn't give up their device as easily. And so the, the maker culture ha- having access to that type of growth mindset seemed to help recipients to adopt longer-term their device. Um, and also with clinicians, um, in terms of being more open to certain types of collaborations, uh, more, more explorations. Um, also knowing that, uh, also having ideas about how they could improve the, the, the device. Um, for instance, in some, um, in some ecosystems, one of the things that we found was that clinicians who, where, where they had sustained follow-up, the clinicians were the ones who were driving a lot of, uh, the shots with the makers, with the, with the recipients. So it was the clinicians who defined, okay, we're going to create this type of device for this particular type of, 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 of recipient. And the clinicians were, had certain skills related to medical making. So, so they had ideas about the type of designs that could be done to satisfy the needs of the recipient. And so the maker culture played a key role in terms of facilitating, uh, collaboration, sustained collaborations between the, the different actors, makers, recipients, and clinicians. Um, and that facilitated having follow-up. Um, so also what we found was that to provide better care, to provide this type of follow-up, ecosystems adopted different strategies. Um, for instance, on one hand, they created formal collaborations around stakeholders. Uh, so this is, for instance, India, Mexico, um, they created agreements, formal agreements, contracts between the different actors about what they were going to do to work together. And these formal agreements, they might seem a little bit strange when you think about it from the maker culture, which maker culture pushes for, um, people to volunteer and be working together out of free will. But those formal collaborations were important when you wanted to get, uh, for instance, universities involved. You also wanted to get hospitals, uh, government-based hospitals involved. Um, it provided a way in which all of the different actors were more able to collaborate longer-term because they had an agreement in place. Um, and also another thing was, uh, some ecosystems as well had integrated fund, uh, secured funding to cover the participation costs when needed. So for instance, in some cases, we found that recipients were paid to participate. Um, and those payments were important because the recipients, if not, they would not, um, if, if they were not paid, recipients would not be able to, uh, for instance, go to the follow-up sessions, be as much invested in, uh, receiving treatment for their, um, for, for improving how they're, how, how they're working with their device. Um, so for instance, in India, they had programs where recipients were paid to go to the clinic, um, and receive follow-up. Um, and they also covered costs associated with, for instance, transportation. They got buses, uh, to pick the recipients up from their villages, to take them to the clinicians who would, the clinicians and makers who would provide the follow-up. They also gave them lunches so that they could, um, cover for the, the needs that they wanted for, um, for, for, for receiving the, the follow-up for, for that day. Um, in Mexico, similarly, they, uh, some recipients were paid for, uh, participating and, and being connected to certain clinicians. Um, and so that was important because you had low-income, uh, people who were involved in the ecosystem and having paying them to participate helped them to, to have more sustained participation. Um, and we do notice that this can go a little bit against, uh, for instance, the, the maker culture. And so it's, I think, an interesting balance to think about, uh, because again, the maker culture argues for free, free participation, um, and doing things out of fun. And when you have a formal agreement, it also becomes awkward, uh, then that you're, you're, you're also going to be rejecting work because you're expecting certain type of labor outcomes from people. Um, and also when you're paying people as well, it, it becomes, um, it, it, it becomes a type of, uh, kind of like a job, but this facilitated, uh, getting more people to participate. Um, and so I think that there's value when we're thinking about the future of Enable. I think on one hand that there's value in thinking about, um, how should we integrate these types of formal collaborations within the maker culture? Uh, and I think that Enable has actually been doing this, uh, for instance, in terms of thinking about, um, you, you, right now you guys have guidelines for rejecting certain designs, uh, giving badges when a, a design is very well structured. Um, but I think that there might be opportunities in terms of integrating these types of formal agreements, uh, across Enable for facilitating, um, especially follow-up. So not, now, not, not just thinking about designs that are created, but also how you can establish those formal agreements to ensure that all recipients are obtaining follow-up. Um, and here I think that there's also value in thinking about, uh, having compensated participation that this can be especially important in, uh, for instance, regions of the world where people are not able, if, if they're not paid, they're not even able to participate. And so I think if we want to be inclusive for everyone, we, we have to better understand the different needs that the different, uh, actors have, makers, clinicians, recipients, in order to really involve them in the process. Um, I think also there are design opportunities in terms of systems for providing sustained follow-up and also with multiple stakeholder participation. Um, and so here, uh, I, I think it's also facilitating collaborations across, uh, ecosystems. Um, this is the storehouse for cross-ecosystem collaboration. So better understanding, which I think also John was mentioning that, um, Enable has been starting to push this, this, these, some of these ideas. Uh, because here I think there's value in terms of understanding, for instance, what do certain ecosystems do, do very well? And how can we highlight that so that others can adopt their learnings? Um, I think that Ben with his newsletter has been giving visibility to the different ecosystems. Um, and maybe then it would be a step forward in terms of, uh, for instance, identifying like, oh, this ecosystem is missing this and this and this, but this other ecosystem has been able to implement this X, X, Y, and Z. And so let's connect them so that they can collaborate and address and, and help each other address certain challenges. Um, and, and I, I do think that with the newsletters that Ben is creating, that, that is a step forward in terms of addressing the, those, those, those types of issues. Um, but moving forward, I think that there's a lot of value in thinking about how does Enable look like globally? Um, and how can we, how can we help, uh, the, the different stakeholders to work together, especially with different backgrounds? Um, and so those were some of the things that, um, I wanted to discuss and I would be very honored to now, uh, just discuss with you. Um, and thank you again, uh, very much. It was a true honor to be, to be here.
Wow.
Oh, indeed. Thank you so much.
No, thank you. Thank you guys. Thank you.
Questions?
I thought, I, I thought that was spectacular, Saif. Um, and, and crystal clear. I'm wondering if you, so I, I know the maker, I understand the maker culture and I understand that concept, but do you want to say more about what you mean by ecosystems? And whether they fell into distinct patterns or whether you take each country as its own unique ecosystem?
Uh, so we, we considered ecosystems as organizations where people were, the different stakeholders were working together, um, with, 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 with each other to achieve a common goal. Um, and so for instance, within the US, we had a different ecosystems because, uh, we saw that, for instance, Enable was not necessarily working with the private companies. Um, and the private companies had their own stakeholders that, that they, that they involved, uh, and they did not overlap with, uh, who Enable was, was working with. And so we considered, for instance, those two separate ecosystems. Um, within, uh, within the case of, um, and right now, I'm, yeah, with, and that also happened, um, regionally, for instance, in with Mexico. Um, so with Mexico, what we found was that, uh, there were some, some groups who were working with the government and they were very much independent of, of each other. Um, and then we had other groups who were working with, uh, purely Enable and, and they, they worked independently from, from, from each other. And so that's how we're viewing ecosystems. And I think that even within the countries, it's, um, it, it depends a lot on the background of the different actors who are involved. So when you have government actors, when you have private industry, that, that changes the, the dynamic of the ecosystem.
Uh, that's really interesting. I have follow-up questions, but I want to, uh, I have so many follow-up questions that I really want to urge other people to jump in, uh, as, as they have some. I don't want to dominate the conversation, but I'll give you a follow-up question while they get their thoughts together and feel free to interrupt either verbally or using the chat. Um, so, so it's not a, there's not a one-to-one correspondence in any way between nation and ecosystem because you've said that, for example, within Mexico, there are, you found two different ecosystems and two different responses to the ecosystem, which is.
Yes.
To me, um, you know, given my interest in ecosystems these days, it was a really helpful way of thinking about it. In some ways, then the chapters have to adapt to the ecosystem the same way that organisms have to adapt to biological ecosystems. But there are patterns in ecosystems and I'm wondering if you have the beginnings of a typology here. For example, there are ones where, uh, I mean, you've, you've identified partnership with government as a feature of some ecosystems, not the US, a feature of some ecosystems, not the US, but others. And that ends up determining a lot of the nature of the, uh, of the situation. Are there other dimensions or hallmarks of the ecosystems that of of, for distinguishing these patterns?
Yeah, that's a, um, and I think that you you're right that the chap, you, we can see the chapters as groups that are within the ecosystem. And and so, and you're you're right that the chapters adapt to the the norms that the ecosystem is defining for them. So some of the main features that we found of, uh, the different ecosystems were precisely about whether or not they had formal collaborations in place. And that type of dynamic, having formal collaborations in place changed, um, whether or not they involved, wh- whether or not they were able to provide sustained, su- 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 sustained participation from the different stakeholders. Other, other types of, um, of factors that that we found was how much they were also adapting the maker culture into their, um, in into how they were operating. So for instance, for some ecosystems, it was even important to have workshops where everyone learned about the maker culture. Um, and so that that I think was also another feature of, an another characteristic of of the, of of the differences between ecosystems. Also, in some ecosystems, for instance, all, you had all stakeholders very much involved. Where it was, uh, normal to have clinicians, recipients and makers working together. And other ecosystems, uh, for instance, clinicians would have more hesitation to join. Um, and so that that I think is also another feature that affected the type of interactions and type of work outcomes as well. Also, thinking about, um, for instance, in the cases where clinicians were not as involved, it seems that clinicians played a key role in terms of defining the follow up. Because for clinicians, it was very natural to define a whole plan about how the follow up should look like. And where clinicians were missing, also us- usually also the the follow up. Actually, in all of the cases that that we found, when clinicians were missing, their follow up was, uh, not something that was implemented in a sustainable manner. So it was more of, uh, oh, I I found my, my my neighbor is a recipient and so I sometimes give them help. But in cases where clinicians were heavily involved, they had complete mechanisms for, um, giving follow up.
So I don't remember, but in your paper, do you call out those particular parameters?
Yes, yes, yes.
I I, I would happily watch this talk again, but I would love to see a slide that, um, lays that out.
Great idea, actually. I'm I'm gonna write that down. Yes. That I I I agree with you. Uh, so in the paper, we do write it down, but I actually, I think that it would be much clearer to present it, as you said, like as a topology related to the ecosystems.
Okay, I'm just gonna wait for someone else. Sarah, do I recognize you as the, uh, Meramont grad now prosthetist?
Me? What?
I'm sorry, Sarah. I thought I recognized you as a Meramont grad.
No, no, that, that's,
Okay.
that, that's not me.
Okay.
No, no, that's, that's okay. I just, I I wondered if there was another Sarah and I didn't want to.
No, that's okay. Well, as long as I've disrupted everything.
Journalist, uh, working in public radio in Minnesota. So she's joining us today to learn a little bit more about Enable and, um, she's done some pretty remarkable research in Cambodia and other parts, places around the world with, um, sort of accessibility and access to services and and healthcare.
How great that you're here. Well, as long as you're here and a journalist, um, do you have any questions for Saif?
Um, right, right now, I'm just, uh, sort of, uh, taking it in. I think I I might have some some follow up that I I would pass along. But right now, I'm just, I'm happy to be here. So thank you for, for having me at this meeting. I'm, um, most interested in, um, feature reporting on, um, public health and 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 healthcare. And met Ben in Cambodia doing, uh, disability access research, so.
You know, he did mention this. I'm, I'm, I'm really glad to have you here and I'm sorry I put you on the spot.
No, 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 no.
To continue these, these conversations.
Absolutely.
And on on that note, I, Sarah, I hope you can join us at some other point. Uh, every Friday, we have these meetings and you're welcome to join anytime that you're available. This is a bit of an atypical one, just because we do have a special presentation today. Normally, there would be a lot more interactivity and discussion, so I hope you can join us another time. There's this.
Thank you.
Great to meet you, Sarah. Very, very interesting, um, work. I I saw that Ben, um, also put a question in the, in the chat. I don't know, Ben, if you want to, um, mention it or I can read it. And great to meet you, Sarah.
Great to meet you too.
Yeah, I thought it was, it's interesting, um, how payment has been something that, has been contentious in some ways with within Enable, but it's usually thought of as, uh, device users paying for their devices. And I thought it was really, uh, significant that Saif talked about the importance of, paying device users to test out their devices, um, and and the contracts that, um, are involved with that. So as as a concise comment for you, did you find any, um, contracts that were the opposite of that, where device users were paying, um, for services? Or was it mostly, okay?
No, we, um, a- a- actually, um, I think that the person, um, one of the recipients, I believe, was actually involved in the ecosystem, uh, from Pol, from, 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 uh, the Paraguay, uh, like, like they were, they they were a recipient that were, was in Chile and where it was, um, related to, to to the ecosystem about what what Pol Paraguay was doing. So actually there, for instance, um, they had a program, in that ecosystem, they had a program where recipients had a WhatsApp group. And if, let's say that their device would suddenly fail, they would ask a maker to come to their house to fix it, um, and they would give the maker a small, um, small, uh, small donations, uh, for it, for the maker to come. Recipients specifically mentioned that they really liked that dynamic because they they like to give payments in terms of, um, if not, they would sometimes feel embarrassed about asking for help. Um, and so, and and they would feel that, oh, I, um, I don't want to bother them. And so they, they like that aspect of payments because then it stopped being, um, i- i- it it was a way in which they would get more rapid help. They would not feel embarrassed about asking for help and that helped them to use their their device longer term. So what we found was that they had, um, they they have a WhatsApp group where recipients post like, oh, I need help in fixing this and this and this. And then a maker would say, okay, I'm I'm available, um, how, like, and and they, there they wouldn't directly say how much that they were gonna pay them to. Um, I thi- I'm I'm not sure if they had established guidelines for for the payments, but it was basically small, small payments. Everything was transparent and then the a maker would co- go to the recipient's house to, um, to 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 fix, to to do that, that that fix.
Yeah, and I, uh, I do remember, uh, talking to Puparaguay about that. And it was something where they started out having all their devices provided for free and then realized that they were struggling with the follow up and it wasn't until they had, um, implemented basically sliding scale of, you know, what's the least amount that we can ask, device users and their families to contribute, it increased, um, sort of the community support. I guess pretty common in Paraguay, they would sort of have like a block party that raised funds for a device. It would be a whole community rallying around an individual to to raise, you know, small funds, you know, basically having like a potluck or something like that, um, for a device. And, you know, you'd get community buy in and awareness that way too. Just, it's it's interesting though, because I know that we've talked at length about, um, you know, the.
Actually, in Mexico, uh, that 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 dynamic that you're mentioning, Ben, is, um, very interesting. I saw it also in Mexico. I had not related it to to this. So basically in Mexico, what would happen is that they would have, uh, like small parties for when a person got a device. I think those small parties are actually key for kind of putting pressure on the recipient to even use the device more. Because it it was like, everybody rallied around that recipient. But I didn't, I I didn't ask about, um, them getting funding for 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 the device. But but it might have been actually a type of potluck for for raising funds. And I think that those types of initiatives do help to get longer term support for 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 the recipient to adopt the device. Because there's more pressure that that the community came together for them. Um, and so now they feel like, oh, I have to use the device, uh, be- because everyone came together. Yes, sorry.
I'm sorry, Saif. I just wanted to say that my impression from talking to Puparaguay is that there's an additional dimension to that also. Which is not only does the, uh, the amputee get a device, they also get a community support network. And, you know, as we increasingly realize, the community support network is as important as the device itself. And as you point out, they support each other. The community network encourages, uh, and celebrates the use of the device. The use of the device encourages the community, you know, enthuses the community.
I think that's a very important di- direction, uh, John, and I agree with you. That's that's something that we, I do need to highlight, I think, more as well in in the results. And I'll highlight, I'll aim to highlight all of this, uh, more in the slides. Uh, you're, I I love this notion about, you're not only getting a device, you're also getting a community support network. And maybe it could be interesting to think about, um, how we could standardize that, um, in in terms of
Right.
ensuring that, um, we're giving people devices and also this access of a community support network.
Uh, so on that theme, Jeff Powell and the group in South Carolina, North Carolina, one of the Carolinas, um, which is now eight universities, have really pioneered and specialized in providing semi annual gatherings for families of recipients. And it's a, it it's at least as valuable as the devices themselves. And they've done a really good job of, um, creating templates for that. And they may in the future do a good job of distributing those templates, but it needs more attention. And they're really terrific.
Great point, John. I I think that's.
In in terms of, um, the current Enable, um, best practices, uh, we do have some literature about, um, not charging for devices. It does seem like paying device users is is it, it's sounds like from what Saif was saying, is it an equally, um, successful way of of motivating them to be involved? You know, and you still could have those, this similar kind of potlucks. So it's it's, uh, inverse of, uh, you know, what what typically has been a dividing line between, um, enable activities and commercial activities. But it definitely seems like something to explore and, um, maybe to revisit within our, um, guidelines, I guess.
Good idea, Ben, actually. And I I hadn't realized that, um, that that aspect about paying, uh, recipients was very different than what is traditionally done. Um, and Mexico, India, I think also Brazil. They were, in in Brazil, I I think that they made us a point of not never giving monetary, mo- 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 mon- mo- monetary, um, not never giving money to people. So they would give, for instance, um, let's say a lunch or or into clinicians similarly. Like, no, nobody would get paid, um, but they would get, um, funding in in other forms, for instance, maybe material, um. And so, but but they had a very strong rule about never giving money. I I I don't know why exactly they had that specific rule, but but for them, it was very important, uh, to never give money. Um, in Mexico and India, I think that they did, uh, but they did also provide funding in terms of buses and, um, and and lunches as well. But but there, it wasn't as as cut of not not giving money.
It may well be that, um, the the meaning of the money and the way you give it varies and the impact of the meaning of the money and the way you give it varies from culture to culture. In, you know, I I, I'm impressed these days that the American healthcare industry is not really about health and it's not about care. It's about industry. It's about, uh, making money by, selling treatments for diseases. And while it's a very profitable business model, it's not necessarily particularly caring or even particularly effective in meeting the needs of, uh, of the people who receive the services. I like to say that Enable is fundamentally about care. That the the whole notion of volunteers helping other underserved populations, in the absence of payment, allows us to optimize the care aspect. The, the underbelly of that same observation, though, is that we don't do a good job for providing follow up, which would be a real uh, hallmark of a of a really well organized care system. And I suspect that the the finance is an important piece of why we don't do a good job of follow up. So it's, it's really interesting. I think, you know, one begins to get a sense of what patterns of interaction constitute genuine patient centric care. And then the question is, uh, and, you know, today I'm saying that Enable is not doing a perfect job of it. And the healthcare industry isn't doing a perfect job of it. Once you've identified that, what I imagine to be an iterative process of interaction that we call care, how do you optimize for that? And how do you use the available tools, whether they are social communities or payments or free transportation or lunches or prizes or badges in order to support that pattern?
I love that idea, John. Um, and I think you're absolutely right. It's it's a matter of thinking, what does patient centric care look like? Um, and then we can go off it and think about, okay, how can we use existing tools to optimize for it? Great, great vision. Um, I want to mention something. I I might have to, I think I have to, um, go because I have class at 12, um, and so I have to directly walk. But it was a big honor, uh, to be here. Thank you very much for 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 the invitation. Um, and feel free to email me, um, any questions, uh, or if I can be of of any help. And I would love to be in touch. I'm I'm gonna aim to, uh, join the the future, uh, meetings now that I'm established. I had to, um, like, where it was very chaotic, I wasn't able to join, but, um, I'm I'm happy to be back. Thank you very much.
It's great to have you back, Saif.
Thank you, Saif.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can add in Saif's email in the chat if anybody wants to follow up with her.
My first day with E- Enable, she presented. So it's pretty cool to see her come back with even more conclusions and insights into this stuff. And, uh, some of the conversations that were sparked by her last presentation, we had some ideas that sound exactly like the findings that she had. Like perhaps having a bit of financial buy in from people when they need like follow ups or maintenance or having more formalized expectations and contracts for recipients and makers and such, that that could help us maintain contact with recipients over the whole process. So it's, it's really cool to hear that she went out and proved it.
Uh, you know, Saif Saif is, she's still here, but she'll forgive me if I say, she's hot stuff these days. She's been listed in many thirty under thirty groups. She's got, she she does it a remarkably wide range of what you might call research on pro-social technology related movements. And so I think it's a very big deal that she's doing such good and continued work with us. And if she's gonna be, continue to be involved, I think it bodes very well for, um, the science and the practice of what we do.
Absolutely. It's a lot of lessons there we can incorporate.
Yeah. Um, you know, I did go over.
Curious, um.
Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, John, you finish and I'll, I'm going to.
I was just gonna say, her academic paper is available to anyone who really wants to dig into it. It's much like most academic papers. It's much thicker and deeper. And frankly, harder to get the big picture than her presentation. But if you want to drill down, she's done the full deal. She's got, you know, uh, graphs and analyses and so on. She's got, you know, uh, graphs and analyses and so on. And so there's, there's a lot there.
Maybe we can add, uh, some of those links into, um, the post for the town hall this week. So if people go back and watch the video, they can see your presentation and see your research paper. So I'll follow up with her on that. Um, I was going to ask Jeremy, um, I know that we had some extended discussions about, um, you know, payment and how that impacts, um, you know, enable activities versus, um, you know, maybe somebody who partners with Enable, but, um, does things outside of, um, sort of the enable community. That's, it's pretty common that most chapters, you know, they'll do, um, architectural design work. Um, and they'll charge for it, but then they'll also do free devices. I mean, there's, there's a range of things that different organizations and volunteers do. Um, some of them are considered enable, you know, but efforts and other ones aren't. Um, I was curious about your take, um, what Pope Paraguay, uh, discovered and, and what Saif was talking about with, um, sliding scale and small payments as a sort of a, a baseline for a, a contract of follow-up and care.
Well, you're talking about payments to the device user in exchange for feedback.
So it sounds like both of those took place, um, within her research study. So of the thirty-one people that she interviewed, um, some were charging, like Pope Paraguay, um, has a sliding scale. They look at income. I think it's, it's, it's a, a model that's actually based on their national healthcare system that they borrowed from, um, one of the partners to figure out, you know, what is um, somebody's income. And it, it goes to free, but it also extends to, um, you know, sort of a limited, um, investment or contribution from device users to use the devices and, and um, are taken the services. And then there's other ones where that the chapters were paying device users to use the devices and, and give the feedback. Either way, there's sort of that extended relationship and, and payment.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't really have any thoughts about it, except as you already pointed out, you know, we, the discussion that we did have, we came up with some language that the community agreed on when it comes to charging for devices. Now, you know, can we revisit that and phrase it differently? Of course. I mean, that's the nature of the community. We can always change direction. I, I, I guess.
It's not clear how, it's not clear how that should be done yet. It's, it's, it's such a, a rich problem. We were trying to ensure against, um, exploitation and liability.
But, yeah, I mean, there's just, there's a lot of, there's a lot of complexities. I think charging for something increases liability and risk. I think it sets a different kind of expectations than saying that this is an experimental device being made in collaboration with a, you know, a user kind of a, like what we've tried to do. I think that, um, it, it, in addition to changing, you know, potential liabilities, it also can st- I, I think it can introduce complexities with regards to licensing. You know, a lot of these designs are, I mean, these aren't our designs. These were all created by various individuals who have shared them as open source designs, um, with, I think, the intention that you not be charging money for them. But of course, there's ways around that. You can charge for a service instead of charging for a device. And it's a bigger discussion. I, um, I, I've always preferred the idea of, of.
Oh, yeah.
Free solution, but that doesn't mean I'm imposed to exploring alternatives. Uh, it's about what works to me. It's about what is, what is going to help the people that need the help. So, you know, I, I don't see anything wrong with the idea that some people are in a position to pay for a device and others are not. And I like the idea of allowing for, for both. I might, I might personally prefer a model of sort of, you know, pay what you can as opposed to making it required payment. You know, sometimes it's like, here's a suggested donation, you know, things like that, but kind of leave it more to people. Um, there's a lot of different ways you could do that.
Uh, just in the minute that remains, uh, I've had a, a new half-baked idea about yet another model. Um, I could imagine putting a call out to the amputee community, saying there's a paid position available for a, um, device and team shakedown specialist, you know, whose job it is to work with multiple groups, uh, for multiple, on multiple designs. And to provide as a service, feedback about the particular device, the particular process. It would also help different teams realize that there's a, there are differences in the way it's conducted and they'd get feedback about who was more effective and so on. This is not a proposal, but it's, it's to me a new model.
Well, and that's, it's, that's interesting, John. And I think there could be benefits in exploring that, but I don't think it addresses the bigger picture of how to provide a scalable solution for ensuring successful outcomes for the largest.
No, it doesn't.
So that's what's interesting about, you know, looking at what people are doing in some of these areas as far as paying different. You know, there's different places in the process where you could apply payments. You can use payments to modify makers. You can, you know, use payments to motivate, 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 you know, your device users to share feedback. You can, you know, there's different ways that that can be applied. And to me, what's, what's interesting is, you know, what's working? What, which of those approaches have actually led to getting more people involved in the process, you know, who need these devices, leading to more successful outcomes? I, to me, it's whatever works.
That, that extended feedback too, um, Saif talked about a couple of times, you know, being something that was in place when there was a, a long-term relationship with clinicians and wasn't, um, really a, a key feature. Um, when it wasn't, um, I thought that was an interesting observation. For other models, you know, similar to what John was saying, in, uh, Pakistan, the team there had something set up similar to, um, not like a GoFundMe, but they would have, um, they would collect specific sponsors for each, um, user or device. So they would say, this device is sponsored by, you know, this group or this organization. And they would organize that ahead of time. My memory is, I'd have to look at it again, but, um, my memory is that they would sort of have their, um, the people supporting the organization specifically be connected to the different cases.
Interesting idea. Uh, you know, if we could pull it off, you can imagine a page on whatever our main website ends up being that has kind of a gallery of potential recipients and you basically can choose to sponsor any one of them. I, I could see that definitely. But, um, you know, there's a, there's a big sort of process element behind that. And of course, getting permission from each individual to share their case and all that. But it has some interesting potential. Yeah, I've always felt like our, our approach to fundraising has been a little bit vague. I, I, I've always liked the idea of, even if we don't go as far as tying it to a specific case, I think we can do a much better job of saying, if you donate this amount, you know, at this level, it will enable us to do X, Y, Z, almost kind of putting together packages for sponsorships and, and being more clear about what a certain amount will enable us to accomplish. And that, that's one way of doing that in a very detailed way.
Right. And, and with so much being dependent on kind of cultural, um, uh, I don't know, orientation, um, I, I think, you know, that having the chapters, uh, have all these different ways of doing that. You know, with the sponsorship of, you know, paying device users, asking device users to contribute on a sliding scale, giving them away for free. Um, it's really interesting to see how, how it's adapted to different cultures. And, you know, and, and in the U.S., there's language that says, you know, no charging for devices. Um, but that is what.
I like that approach of donations for that reason, because then we're not really charging, but we're still getting the financial support needed to the people that need it. Um, I, I think that's worth having some follow-up discussion about. I can see it being a mixed approach where you have almost like, like I said, kind of a gallery page where you can choose what you want to support. And that could include specific cases where you have a picture of a person and you can choose to support that case. But it could also support some of these other initiatives that we have. Maybe you want to donate, you know, a thousand dollars to support this project that we need to get done or some development initiative or, you know, any of those other things that we have on our list that it could, we could have a kind of a gallery of support, you know, things that could include both cases and other things that you could be very specific about what you want to, you know, support within the community. There's, there's a lot of potential in that.
As, as the hour.
Yeah, we should wrap up.
Past noon, I, I do want to, I do want to say that this is a really interesting discussion about how Enable might be configured in the future. I just want to point out, um, that Saif newly installed in Boston. Ian Roy, um, well-installed and enthusiastically picking up on various aspects of Enable. Eric Bubar, who's interested in R and D at Marymount and Jeff Powell, um, are all, you know, the four of them each have different superpowers and they're all thinking about this whole question of what might be their role in taking Enable forward. So I think this presentation is really good background for all of them. And Ben, we should make sure that they, they know that it's, that it's there. Um, and this discussion, I think, is really good grist for their mill about what kind of enable, um, they think they can take into the future. I'm feeling good about it.
Agreed. Anyone else have any final thoughts? Okay.
Um, this is a, a different.
Sorry, go ahead.
Topic, but, um, the, the focus follow-up workshop has been rescheduled for next week. Um, I got a message from Paraguay. Um, they, uh, they apologize for the, uh, the, the late cancellation, but they'll be ready for next week to present about their research in lower limbs. It'll be in Spanish and then with the automatic captions, it'll be, um, we'll be able to translate it to English. But I, I've shared that in the hub. Um, just wanted to update everybody here.
And that would have been today?
Yeah, it would have been today at, uh, 1:00 P.M. and now it's next Friday at 1:00 P.M.
Will you be able to show up at 1:00 P.M. just to, uh, uh, explain this to people who didn't get the memo?
Yeah, yeah, I can go and I did email the last forty, um, new members from Spanish-speaking countries. I responded to them. In an email, but I'll, I'll go today and I'll, I'll see if I can, um, catch anybody that didn't get the, the message.
Muchas gracias.
Uh, final thought, um, as John mentioned, we have a number of people getting involved who we hope are going to be a big part of our sort of, uh, future direction and, and carrying the ball forward. Uh, a lot of them being involved in education, uh, this time that we are meeting currently on Fridays for the town hall, probably not a good time for most of them. We might want to think about, you know, think it. Cause these are, these are sessions that I would love for them to be able to join us for. So just something to think about. We can have that discussion next time.
Sure enough.
And maybe the, the beginning of the week, um, or even over the weekend, um, I, I think the, by the end of the week, in most schools, people are, you know, one foot out the door. So any, any discussion topics, it can be hard to, to get that stuff going on a Monday after, after the break.
Okay.
Yeah, I think lunch hours are actually an interesting time for academics. They have to have lunch and we might think about doing noon on an earlier day of the week, because Friday lunch is often when you do this type of thing, but we'll see what they think.
Well, and that's a good point. I wonder if, uh, Ben, could I ask you to help me with that? Would you mind actually reaching out to the people in question? Just get their input on, you know, is there a, a day or time that would be better for them to join us for these that we could think about?
Sure. So, uh, Ian, Saif, Jeff, um.
And Eric. Yeah.
That's a poor horseman of the apocalypse.
Yeah, we'll talk about it next time.
Sounds good. I could actually, we could even email all the educational chapters if you'd like.
Feel free, by all means. More involvement, the better. So, yeah, I want to know what works for the most. All right. So we'll chat about that next week. Thanks, everyone. Bye-bye.